Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is Tuesday, May 27th, 2025. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do you have any minutes for reports received and filed?
No, I do not.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
See, I think the sheriffs have a golf tournament for their Relay for Life team today. And Thursday, they've got a grand reveal for the library Sprinter van that we did some ARPA money for. And Friday, we've got our annual Mid-Missouri Solid Waste Management District Annual Council meeting. I think that's about it.
Today at 10:00, the governor has a press conference on his special session for the Chiefs, for the Royals, and for us.
Cardinals?
Yes, yeah.
No.
No.
Did I do anything for the Cardinals?
No.
The team that anybody will watch.
They have a new, they have a fairly new stadium.
On Wednesday, I have a Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission meeting in Ashland. Jeff mentioned the library van. I had Sheriff Golf on Friday listed for something.
It is.
It's Friday?
It's Friday.
Not today, so I just put it on.
I had down Friday.
Okay.
Anyway, we could check with the sheriff and make sure.
Nope, there's a good chance I just put it on the wrong day.
I had down Friday.
It's Friday.
That's it.
My administrative assistants have been handling things very well on this, which is me.
Okay, well, today we have a department head's meeting at 11:30. And usually, one of us city councilman, one of us commissioners goes. So I will go unless you wanna go or you want to go.
I didn't get invited anymore.
Well, it's not really. It's, I had to ask, so, do you wanna go?
Nope, y'all wanna take it over and have your own meeting?
No, 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 it's just one commissioner can attend.
I disagree. We're not making decisions over this, talking about what's going on. No difference sitting in a ballgame with two of us sitting there.
Okay, do you wanna go?
No.
Would you like to attend? 11:30 today. Okay, then I will go represent the commission. And just a little sidebar, the aircraft carrier USS Air Yes Truman is due home in Norfolk from an eight-month deployment today, so we sent them some money. Thursday, library van.
Sam. When you say "we sent them some money," people out there might think.
Not the commission.
Okay, I'm just.
It's not, not the county.
Right, so we did not send them any money.
I, we're part of the group who sent money. Friday is the sheriff's Relay for Life golf tournament. The Chamber of Jefferson City and Columbia are hosting a meet, meeting of our Congressman Onder and Alford at 1:30 over in Columbia. And I will go unless, Jeff, do you wanna go over to Columbia and meet our reps?
No.
Okay. Saturday, I am on KWS with Hal and MU Health, and I've got a Navy League Regional meeting, so that is all I have. Okay, any commission comments? Okay, bids and contracts. Approval and signing of agreement with Cole County Fire for EMS station number four.
Good morning, Jinx.
As we get closer to starting on the project down in Brazito, looking at the next month or so of getting that started, we felt it was important to update our agreement for use of that space for the future and to address our commitment to improving that. So basically, this agreement basically reflects the updated monetary exchange that we're gonna agree to pay $125,800. The fire district's gonna pay us $29,800. And for that, we will occupy the Brazito space for, I believe, twenty years. The, it's a whole fancy way of saying that our agreement's not gonna change. We're still gonna pay half the utilities on a quarterly basis per the original agreement. And the only thing that really changes this is that we're gonna pay for renovations. So they put it before their board, it has been signed by them. So just ask, would you sign that today? And just for clarification, we actually pay all the utilities there since we're the only ones that occupy it. And that's where the original agreement is. Questions?
I guess I wanna just drill on to the auditor for a minute. Does the auditor like us to take on liabilities for 20 years? Does it matter?
It's a one-time payment?
Yes.
Okay, it's a one-time payment. Well, but we're also, well. I'd just like to pick on the auditor when I get a chance.
Over 20 years.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's probably okay unless Jill has an issue.
No, because it's appropriated this year.
Chief, what is the next one that will address something like this location-wise that you have?
I think we've had some ongoing conversations here this morning and probably we'll be looking at South Ridge. There are numerous factors at play there. Commissioner Helscher and I walked through the facility last week. You know, historically, the ambulance was located in the back area of that complex in kind of a built-in on the second story. That built-in is deteriorating because nobody's up there anymore. So we probably need to address that. That facility is 10, 15 years old as far as the inside. The floor needs to be replaced. And then Commissioner Bushman brought up this morning looking at expanding the space for the communications center. So doing all of that and addressing some of the facility issues such as the drainage and some issues that are going on with the floor, we'll probably look at doing that next year and be a rather sizable investment.
The drain number is astounding, isn't it?
Sorry, that was wrong price.
Yeah, it wasn't the 250. It was going for 2150, and I think we can make some changes to that, get that price down because the drain is 16 inches running throughout that building. It's got a grate on it. We might be able to just tie into it, fill it in, put a couple of round drains in there that we can squeegee to. We were stopping a bill earlier too, he's not here right now.
He's here.
Oh, there he is, back there. So it's not like our ambulance is on the other side that come in with weather on them a lot every day, every other day. So I think we can get away with less there. I think we need to change the scope of the project on that one.
Are you removing that back building?
I don't know that we need to remove it. I don't know if, you know, so we leave the external shell. What we do on the inside, I don't know what the answer is.
So you got the mezzanine level that they had the water leaks on it, so that floor's in bad shape. Needs to be, it's not in like horrible shape. You can still walk around up there, but before we do anything or store anything up there, we would need to do something with it. I don't necessarily know if we wanna move somebody over there. It's great for storage, but there's a lot of steps there. I mean, it's not up just like a regular set of stairs at your house. Maybe put the auditor over there, you know, who causes us troubles, but. It's his data, he picked on, I think. I think it's something we can look at doing somewhat even down the road. Doesn't have to happen now, but there's some stuff sitting over there and we can clean it out. I don't know, you know, I wouldn't necessarily even wanna move maintenance out there. But if we needed office space at Adams, that would be one thing we could look at, is making a move like that.
The general building needs some work. There's some work on the ramp to expand some concrete, maybe tear down some of the old shipping areas that are starting to deteriorate and fall down. Maybe it needs a paint or a power wash, but it needs some investment. So that's probably what we'll look at.
Okay.
Nothing else, get it freshened up a little bit. There's some that just can just use a good cleaning. All right, to get it. All right, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the agreement with Cole County and Cole County Fire Protection District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of outlay report and requesting reimbursement from the EDA grant, which is the railroad spur extension project.
We're getting money today, Matt's here.
That's right. So this form is required for the final dis- disbursement of the funds from the EDA grant. This grant was used as a funding source for the construction of the cart facility and railroad spur extension project. And the total grant was $1.25 billion. We have received some funds from this grant so far, and we're looking at a little over $800,000 for final disbursement. This form, I just need your signature, Sam, for the county, and then I'll get this sent over. And hopefully with all the other documentation, we'll be receiving those funds soon.
I'll make a motion to sign the outlay report requesting reimbursement from the EDA grant on the railroad spur extension project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then we have on here a discussion of part-time respiratory therapy. But we're supposed to do it 9:45 because I received it late and then it didn't get posted. But, you know, if we go east coast time, it's.
Not a solution.
Or if we do the old business kind of show?
Yeah, I do have some.
It's not old business.
No, no. As I told Sam this morning.
Yeah, we could table.
It's not time-sensitive, so we can table it so we don't have to hold everybody here for 30 minutes staring at each other. So we'll find that.
We'll just hang around a little while.
Well, that's fine.
But when you mentioned it's not old business, you were mentioning the respiratory question?
Yes.
Now about anything else that might be old business?
Maintenance, open position.
Yeah. Yeah, I had something that is unfinished or old business I was gonna bring up because we had some emails going back and forth about possible candidates for maintenance. And then we had something in there about posting the salary. And I don't know if Sheila had gotten, talked to both of y'all. I know that Sam had said something in an email that he was okay with the starting salary at 17. I didn't reply back to it because I think there's more to it than just raising the starting price to 17 because that's gonna affect everybody. Here's the current salaries if you want to see them.
Yeah, I had those, that's what I was, that's what I was looking at.
If you're looking at doing that, then are you looking at changing all of them?
No. My thing, you know, we were talking about hiring a temp service. And the temp service, we were gonna be paying a temp $17 an hour plus the additional that we would pay the company. And there are only certain things they could do or are allowed to do. So I thought if we're gonna pay them $17 an hour as a temp and we're advertising our employees to apply at $15 an hour, to me, that just didn't make any sense. So I just think it needs to be consistent. And so when I sent that out, I said, my suggestion would be, and that's just my opinion, so I was leaving it open for you and the Western Commissioner to, to, you know, weigh in on it as well.
What is your definition of a temp? Is it for some, that someone works for some other company?
That was a discussion, yes.
Okay, so.
That we, that we hired, we approached the temp agencies to.
Well, when, when we approach the temp agency and they furnish us an employee, we do not pay the employee anything. We don't pay them. No, we don't. We do not pay that employee anything.
We pay the agency.
That is correct. So whether we saying we're paying them 17, 18, 19, it doesn't matter. They're the one that's paying them. We don't set, we don't set that, they do. If we pay them 25, they figure out how much they can spread, what their, their tax cost is, payroll tax, other things. So for us to say we're gonna pay a temp $17 an hour, what I'm saying is, that's, that's, that's false. We're not doing that. If we're paying a temporary agency, we're paying a temporary agency. We are not paying the employee anything. They are.
Yes.
Okay.
That they are paying that employee 17.
Well, we don't know that. We don't know that. That's between the employee and the, and the employee's employer. That's not our, we stay out of that.
Well, in billing, Harry, they do disclose what they're paying.
That's fine, but we don't tell them what to pay that person. And we can't.
But you need to weigh in if you believe that's a different scenario.
When I got ahold of the temp agency and they asked what range would I be comfortable paying, I said, I'd like to see somebody around $17 an hour or even 18. And she goes, okay, at the $17 an hour range, we charge you $25 an hour. I said, okay, send me the paperwork.
Well, then tell them you want one for 13. They're not gonna find one.
No.
So the market's gonna set it, not us.
And I don't, I think we're having a hard time dealing with 15 and 17.
I'm, I'm just ranting a bit today more than usual.
Well, that's why I understood it too, though, was I'm paying temp agency X amount of dollars. I don't know, or maybe I will know what they're paying, but I honestly don't care. I'm just telling you what I'm willing to pay you to take care of these headaches. You know, they gotta take care of all the other stuff and to make sure that these people are showing up and things, so. I just, if we're doing the 17, though, I don't, I don't think we can just go 17 to start somebody off here. We've got people that have been here for two years, you know, that are making 15 cents more an hour than that, and that's not fair to them. So if we're gonna do something like that.
Yeah, he is getting the raise here, although we.
He's playing that though, right?
He was on disclaration action and they only gave him 3% of the 2.5%. Well, he showed improvement, which he has shown improvement. So when his time's up, next month, he will be getting a pay form, which is sitting on the desk for this rule, 2.5%, right?
Yeah, it works out to be 43 cents an hour. That, that brings him to the full 5.5 that was approved in March for the additional on the certain departments.
That takes him to 17.58, enough.
Jeff, I think I share your concern about how much our own people will make if, if we pay that $17 number. There should be a little more spread, but we've gotten, you know, we've gotten pinched in, in this kind of discussion before when somebody, somebody comes to us and says, I wanna pay X brand of employee so much, and that means everybody below, I'm sorry, everybody above gets bumped, so.
So, I mean, if we're advertising it at 15 to 17, or 15 to 19, you know, commensurate upon your experience or background, I mean, you all had a candidate. And I think we all know the person, and I think that the character and stuff we could all vouch for, and it actually has got background in doing this. So I, I think it's a good candidate. I don't have a problem probably starting at that rate for that person. But I just wanted to make sure if we're advertising at 17, that that's what we're.
I mean, the last time I didn't have a, that was over here at Florida, last month.
Greg, you're, you're probably not getting picked up like you should.
Two years ago, when we tried to find an employee, it took me over a year to find one to come to work at, I think at that time it was.
15, 17.
15, yeah. So it's hard to find somebody that wants to work at that, at that wage right now. You look at Hitachi, what they're starting at. If you got some skill set, they'll pay you more. Unilever, we're still looking.
Have you seen over there and worked? Have you been over there and worked in Unilever or Hitachi or some of them? You can stand on hard concrete all day long and.
Yeah, I worked there two summers, for two summers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it's actually better now because they've got, they've got air conditioning and air fans moving now.
Man, it sounds easy, but.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is, we're not necessarily.
I, I understand.
Standing at a factory.
Right.
Station all day long. We're not cracking a whip on anybody and making a move at 100 to nothing.
Right. You look at MoDOT, MoDOT's hurting for people too. So it's, it's not just us, it's everybody.
Those are a lot different jobs than what we're posting for.
Well, this gentleman's not working on the floor. He, right now, he's working for a big manufacturer, but it's, it's not.
He's doing this, he's doing janitorial.
And he's taking a $3 an hour cut to come to us. And, but he, he goes in at 5:00 and he, he does the janitorial, bathrooms, kitchens. He does it twice a day. So I guess he's just over the office. But they approached me and I thought, my God, here we got somebody.
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's got some.
Competent and reliable and dependable, so, you know, if, if.
I can use him more than just a janitor too because he should know how to change foot, he says he knows how to change air filters. He says he can grease a motor. I, I can use him for a lot more than just a janitor or two.
I'm not talking about just this person. I'm saying in general, we went to $17 an hour. And I don't, I know, I had an email go through, so I didn't know if we had a second yes to say going 17 or what. So if we're gonna do that, we just, we have some other people on there we need to take into consideration, so.
Well, my email was just a suggestion, but I never heard from, from either one of you, so I, I can't.
So he didn't have a yes vote, so that was my choice.
Yes.
I have, I have another wrench to throw in the works, though. We currently have an employee on FMLA protective leave from maintenance. We cannot legally hire that replacement until he's gone. His leave does expire next week. However, historically, the last five years, we have considered unprotected 30-day leaves for other people that continue to have a need beyond their FMLA period. I don't know if he has a need. I don't know if that's something he's wanting to approach us about. I've not addressed it with him. But until he's actually out the door, we cannot hire someone else without saying, you are a temporary employee until we know differently.
We've got an open position, though.
In, in, not, I'm not talking Todd's position, I'm talking his position.
They're all maintenance, I mean, what's.
Todd's under the. Different, differently?
I, I understand, but they both serve the same purpose. And I know Greg might wanna arm wrestle the sheriff to see who gets to have you.
But he should have armed wrestled him a year and a half ago when sheriff took it under his budget. But, so yeah, there is one missing from the sheriff's department. And the one that is not here now is still protected. We cannot fill that role definitely.
Until when?
Until his leave has expired and until he either retires, which he's brought up, or until he has requested and either been approved or denied for an additional 30-day unprotected leave like we've done for many other departments. I mean, we have to afford him the same opportunities.
I think the gentleman we're talking about, they have a vacation plan, so it'd be like pass, a little past the middle of June before he starts.
Yeah, it would be June 20th before he'd even be able to start.
So we can.
Most of the problem may be solved, but still, the position that is currently on FMLA is not technically open for full-time replacement.
I, I understand that. Where I'm having a little bit of fogginess is we have had an unofficial position, or I shouldn't say that, an unofficial policy of allowing, permitting, granting, almost like an extended FMLA.
It's not unofficial, Harry. It's in our handbook and has been for five years.
Okay, so we're bound by it, is what you're saying.
We're bound to at least consider it if he requested it.
Okay, well, are we, are we black and white, bound by it?
You're not bound to approve it.
Okay.
But it is in our policy as an opportunity for a full-time.
Upon approval, it doesn't say.
Yes.
Automatic.
Yes, correct.
Okay, got it.
All the medical documentation would have to be there too.
Well, that, I guess that's a given, but I'm just trying to understand if, if we enhanced FMLA officially in black and white, and we really haven't enhanced it more than what the federal government says you have to have.
No, we have not enhanced FMLA.
Okay.
In that respect.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Two things, the sheriff is advertising that maintenance position for 17.78 an hour. So it's a little complicated that way, and we should kinda be on the same page, but.
So where did we get theirs to 17.78? And I know that he's his own.
Sheriff's budget, yep.
So when we approved to say, okay, we have kind of John Mugg memory on this, but when we did pass that position over there, did he agree to pay for part of it? Is that?
He pays for the entire making position section, does he do?
I don't.
I thought he did.
I thought he did too, because I didn't, I don't figure that in my budget, what he makes, any of it.
And that really just kinda helps our maintenance, our maintenance guy out because then he's got somebody to help get him stuff when he's behind the chases and trying to fix stuff. And then they've also got their guy that takes care of their janitorial needs the way they want it done. I mean, kinda not any different than public works. I mean, we, we sub that out, but they, they get to kinda have a little say how they get theirs done.
Well, and working in that environment is different, like you said, but. Sorry, I was just trying to get to the footnote. I'm trusting that he reverses, or that we take it off of the transfer. That's what I was worried about.
No.
Okay, sorry. So that and plus, so is cleaning service out of the picture now? Do you wanna just hire this position?
I wasn't going that far.
Okay, well, I'm just bringing that up.
I'm just wondering, so I still think we need to look at that.
For, for all of our buildings?
Especially when we're having trouble finding people.
I, I would say yes, let's still, I think.
Still did that.
Talk to Jessica about Ben. Talk to Jessica about Ben, just, just to see, you know, it, it.
I mean, even if it's just one or two buildings that gets taken away for cleaning service, that would help tremendously.
I think we'll get more vendors if we do all buildings.
But that's, yeah, that's fine.
If you bring one in, let's say this building, you're not gonna get very many. If you say all county buildings, then I think we'll get more looks.
Well, I think Public Works already has their own service.
Instead of CMS, right?
Yeah, so, it would be excluding those two. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm.
Well, how many years has Public Works had theirs, do they have to remit that?
Four, I think.
It's at least four.
We just did it, I think, last year, so I think they still have three years of.
Okay.
Do that as an alternate and do all of it, and then when that contract expires, if we can't get enough deal, we can try something different, or maybe ABC Company says, hey, well, we don't have a problem doing this building, let's pick up some more.
Most of our contract has a thirty day out.
We can put it in the RFP to look at, that way we have a number for the whole county.
Yeah, I, I, we ought to look at it.
Okay, we'll continue with that, um, so then. And pay and. Whether to hire right now or wait.
My question is, was if we're gonna advertise, start at seventeen, are we gonna do anything with the rest of these? The candidate that, that we're talking about, without mentioning names or anything, I, I think it's worth seventeen. Get some background and proven history even.
I'm just waiting for the Eastern District Commissioner to approve some salary raises that we otherwise wouldn't approve, because that will make the news.
You got that message? Jessica and money, and things are flying.
I mean, even if you went to what the sheriff was offering, seventeen seventy-eight, and then bump everybody up seventy-eight, you're talking about sixteen hundred a person, like that. So, it's up to you guys.
I'm talking seventeen for this new candidate, and then if you have another candidate comes in, we can look at it. Or do we look at a candidate possibly going to the sheriff's office, and like I said.
He won't go.
We've just done the five and a, five and a half percent for these people.
I get it, but they are the.
He won't, he won't go to the sheriff's department. He doesn't wanna be in that environment. And he said.
Understandable that that might be the reason why that one pays more. They're, they may have the same job duties, but.
He's probably the only janitorial staff that regularly is called by all kinds of names and receives all kinds of thrown liquids and sometimes solids.
We don't, we're, luckily, most of our work is behind the cells, or they don't get the seal.
I know most of it, but that.
And when we're in there, we have them locked down. We're not, my, my people have already told not to go into any of the cells.
Things they try to get down in areas that aren't supposed to be in there.
Yeah.
Toilets and things that you guys are having to deal with.
Yeah, blankets, socks, soap bars, oh, yeah.
I think we just deal with the new candidate when he comes in, and if, if we've already got it to advertise at seventeen, and that's what I guess they're gonna expect, but that was just my point. This one here comes in with the experience and stuff that, that makes a difference on. So, I could see going ahead and doing seventeen on that one, if he wants to take the position. But then, we'll keep advertising it at seventeen.
Do we need to post?
No, if we.
The position?
If the position would be full for me.
Yeah, we don't need, we won't need to.
I'll be full.
With this, we would not, then we would not.
Unless another one goes out on medical, which he might.
So, I guess, are you given great approval to hire this physician at that seventeen? And are you going to wait till the other one expires, or go ahead and assume?
I'm, if, I'm speaking, maybe I'm speaking out there. I'd like to go ahead and get him hired. If the other individual does leave, fine. If he doesn't leave, guess we'll figure it out. But I've got, in the next eight weeks, just about every, I've got somebody off on just about every week on vacation. Now through the end of August. And if he does, if we do give him additional thirty days, that's gonna even hurt us more. Because then I will have two people go on, and we're not gonna be able to cover everything.
Is the current funding situation okay to add the body, other departments to it, or we just make it up? Maybe a transfer come close to the end of the year.
So, yes, I'm okay offering him seventeen.
Second.
All in favor?
Fibulator, fibulator. Thank you, Jeff.
And we will continue with the things.
Let's kill about ten more minutes. What else can we discuss?
Y'all saw the emails I've sent you for last week's horrific, wonderful week. That I've already told Eric Hoy, his water heater may have to be replaced this year. It is leaking around the top where the dielectrics are at. They are gonna try to replace the dielectrics, but if it's too far eaten up, they'll have to put all hot water here.
At South Ridge?
South Ridge. That was, it's probably twelve years old now already, since we did that remodel. Pretty close. Uh, we moved it from the front to the back, or back to the front, whichever way you wanna.
Is there any update on Jim's office?
What do you mean?
Are we gonna have to get rid of carpet or anything?
No, it's dried out. It's fine. It actually cleaned the carpet, so, took all the dirt out of it, and we sucked it all up. Huh?
It smelled very bad.
When?
Last week.
Thursday?
Oh, no, and that was the other thing.
That was the sewers, yeah, the city sewers. Trying to think, what else? Generator at Pringer, they're ordering an ECU for it. Hopefully, that'll be here this week. Didn't ask them what it costs.
What is an ECU?
It's the controller that starts and stops the whole unit. It reads the voltage off the lines and tells the generator to start or stop. Control board. Other than that, I think everything else is fixed. Uh, did send Jeff an email about the drains at Pringer, but I didn't know he'd already talked to Hoy and about those. Other than that, I think that's about it. Sorry, I didn't kill very much time, but.
And speaking of buildings, I guess the, we're getting done with the PMS building and the final payment? The checkoff list or?
Yeah, because I did have some questions on that.
Yeah.
I got, you know, some subs waiting to be paid on it too, and I know we're still holding some retainage. They maybe have a few things on their checkoff list.
Yeah, so, as far as we're concerned, we're completely out of it. That's all being handled by the project manager and GBH themselves. We issued payment up to, I believe, the retainage that is still left. So, there are just a few punchless items that need to be wrapped up, and I don't know, you know, one of the issues stems from the overhead doors. So, I don't know where we are on resolving that situation. So, I don't know who the subs are in question, but I know there is retainage being held because there are substandard facets to the building. So, that's where we're kinda at.
So, we're still having issues with the doors?
Correct. And, and to my understanding, there, there was retainage for every sub and every scope of work in the project, and none of that retainage has been paid yet. So, it's, it's not directed at any one person. But we have not closed the contract or reconcile any of the, the funding on that piece, so that is still to come.
I think we're still waiting for money from the city to.
Yeah, they, they owe us money still. We have received the entire amount of the grant down the city.
Could you, could you and I visit about that, just to recap of, of where we are?
I think it's a hundred, it's a hundred and some thousand. It's not, I mean, it's not a big number, but it's still.
That's of the two million dollar.
Yeah.
CDBG.
Right.
Less there.
I don't know how that works.
Well, they.
All I see is the money coming in.
Right, there are.
We have not received two million dollars, we're still a hundred and some thousand dollars short.
They were sharing admin costs with the Midmore Regional Planning Commission, which I think was.
If I remember right.
Four and a half percent for each.
Yeah, you're gonna detect those off these dollars.
Okay. And the one fee for the federal audit that the city said they were gonna incur, okay.
Since we are so close to meeting this threshold here, I guess I'll, I'll kick it a little bit longer. So, just an update on the baby box, say, David Baby Box. About two weeks ago, the shot drawings were completed by the architects, so I believe they've gone through the engineering piece that's been passed to GBH for their estimate and their development of however that process works. The box is being manufactured. I actually just got a call from them, tried to request a timeline. So, there, there's a lot of moving pieces here because they will not ship the device until the contractor has a firm timeline for installation. So, that is still moving forward. It's just been a slow project. I think we've been about a year into this now, but the, the engineering and structural piece is done. It will go where we, where we want it to go, and now it's just a matter of getting the construction piece.
So, where are we putting it?
It'll be on the east side of the building facing south. So, if you, from McCarty Street, if you look up towards the building, you'll see the double doors, and it'll be just right to the side of that. So, it's a nice spot off the road where, where it's not super visible, but still very accessible. I think it's, it'll be a good spot. It, the backside of that is a secured corridor within the building, so.
Eric, have you got your books yet for that building?
No, that's part of the closed construction business, which is why we have to close out any contracts.
Okay, I wanna make sure I get a copy of that and an actual as-built. Blueprints.
Yeah, but I haven't got a blue.
Okay. Uh, I can tell something, health department's moving right along. They replaced a hun, here as of Friday, they were at a hundred and seventy-eight pieces of siding they had replaced that were either cracked or damaged. Christie and staff picked out the colors that they want for the trim in the walls. Windows are hoping to be here within two weeks, the, for insides, that ones were bad. Other than that, they're moving right along. Hopefully, they get some nice sunny days from no rain, so they can get started painting and not worry about humidity and paint and rain on the walls.
And this is GBH, yeah.
GBH, yes. Very good, very good company to work for.
Yeah, they are. Yes?
I guess since we're trying to kill time, I'll give you all a couple of things.
No, 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 no engineers.
Slow, my, it's nine forty-five.
Frog Coller Road. Frog Coller Road is being closed today for the Wildwood Extension. That closure will probably last through the summer with the roundabout and the Wildwood Drive Extension. GBH has installed the doors at Public Works facility for our new security system, so, short and quick, and I'm not like Eric.
I do have mine.
Okay, go ahead.
I do too. So, I appreciate you guys dragging us out to do this on the evening today. So, a couple of months back, we were approached by a respiratory therapist at one of our local hospitals who had a desire to get into pre-hospital emergency medicine. We took that to Dr. Stilly, and the state of Missouri does not have rules and regulations outlined for respiratory therapists to work in the pre-hospital environment the way that they do nurses. So, we kinda went back to the drawing board and kinda came up with the idea of hiring this individual in an educational role. So, if you remember, about three years ago, we made a significant investment in ventilators, you know, that are state of the art, and really do some very intensive critical care type interventions. With that, only a couple of us in our organization have really some in-depth experience in that sort of work and that sort of treatment. So, you know, that's been an area where our staff has constantly requested more education, more experience in using those sorts of things. Unfortunately, I just don't have the time or bandwidth to really get into the weeds on a clinical standpoint. So, bringing in somebody who, that is their only job, they use that ventilator on a daily basis to work and provide education and do that training was super attractive to us. And then we also sat down with Dr. Stilly, and we discovered that there is a path for allowing a respiratory therapist to work in the clinical environment. They already do it on children's transport teams that you see associated with the helicopter programs at the bigger hospitals. But what this would basically allow us to do is have a respiratory therapist allow her to work in the field as long as she was not the primary caregiver, so she could still do, start IVs and to be, do all the things that she's trained to do as long as it's under the supervision of the medical director and the parent line. So, I've taken all of that and put that into a job description. And basically, this is a, this is a part-time position that's not any different than the part-time positions that we already have. I have not broached the subject of hourly pay yet, but again, our part-time budget is just a lump sum of money, and we pay people whatever hourly wage out of that. So, I'm not entirely sure that the hourly request from this person is going to make that big of a difference one way or another when you look at it on a part-time basis. So, that is a little bit of an overview of what we're doing. I just wanted to put this on your radar, since it is changing your job description and bringing another aspect into the organization, see if you guys have any comments, concerns, or what we need to do.
I think you always wanna be on the cutting edge, Eric, and have that.
This is, this is another way for us to push it a step further. So, having that sort of resource available in our agency is, is very attractive to us. It will close one of those gaps and allow us to, to get deep into that education because, quite frankly, the folks in our education department really don't have the experience or bandwidth to, to get to the level of understanding that somebody who is board certified and has a bachelor's degree in, in respiratory care, you know, would be like an ER doc trying to perform surgery. You know, it's completely different specialties. So, having the ability to bring that in is something that's really important. And then, having it operated on the clinical side, when we do have those high acuity, very sick patients coming out of our local hospitals, going to the university, that is a resource that we can bring in to provide that specialized care. So, we can take it from just, you know, two paramedics to now a paramedic and an RT, so, to handle that.
So, I guess you think of this most often used when you're moving a challenged patient breath-wise from a local hospital to a. breath-wise from a local hospital to a higher care location?
Yeah, really. And, and that's where we get really into the weeds. So this is vastly complex. It's just not moving air in and out. There, there's techniques and, and, you know, metabolic processes that, that go on in this. So, you know, it's not just squeezing, you know, twelve times a minute. There, there is a technique and there's an art to this. And really, that is very critical when you're moving very sick patients from one hospital to another. We still use the ventilator in the field. We use it for people that are having acute respiratory emergencies. And, and again, having that experience and, and being able to provide that education to our folks at a different depth than what we're doing currently is, is going to be huge for us.
You're making our EMS even better than our EMS. I think it's wonderful.
So did I understand it right? We're not adding a position to change our pay position?
So, so universally, how we've always approached part-time is we don't limit the number of part-time people that we have. We could have fifty people on the books as long as they are meeting within the budget. Now, that budget kind of wanders based on our needs, because more part-time, hourly, or budget spent means that we're paying full-time people less than overtime. So we always try and at the end of the year, meet the personnel budget, but that often means maybe we move some money from unscheduled overtime into part-time, because that's how we're leveraging those, those positions. So it, it's not adding another full-time position. It's just creating a new subcategory within our part-time allowance.
So then once we're okay with adding the part-time respiratory therapist, then you'll discuss the salary here?
And, and from what we understand, you know, I, this isn't my specialty. I haven't really been in the weeds. But kind of talking with this individual, that's not really the big hang-up. I don't know that it will be very far off or any different than what our part-time paramedics are currently making. So I, I don't think there's any issue there. It, it's not like they're going to come in at a double an hourly rate or something.
Are they going to be able to call, or how do you kind of decide? Are you going to, I guess, is this going to be more for transferring people that have the ventilator and stuff?
Yes. So the, the mechanics of that will still probably work out. I think there are going to be some days that, that they are spending here doing education and doing clinical availability. So riding with the battalion chief or riding with the, the crew, not only to provide them education, but be another set of hands. So if a transfer comes in, obviously, we'll utilize that resource. If there is something really tenuous and really sick that needs to be moved, sometimes I get those phone calls and get up in the middle of the night. Maybe this is a, a scenario where that this individual will, you know, be willing to participate at that level. I'm, I'm just not sure of that yet.
Okay. We haven't really had a chance to discuss it, so-
Yep, yep.
Can this person also with our EMS class do a session?
Yes.
So can help, yeah.
One hundred percent.
Yep.
We're really excited about the opportunity. I don't know of any other EMS agency that has the ability to bring in, or has taken this step, to bring in somebody like this. So I think it'd be, it'd be really beneficial for us. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. Do we have anything else to come before us?
I'll make a motion to stand in recess until four thirty PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all.